It's been a long time.
I'm sure it's been a while.
Blackberry.
Between the water and the top.
I'm believing.
Yes.
But if you're across the country, always something.
Yeah, no, I'm telling you something.
We're being retarded.
That way.
I don't know.
Let's do it.
Director.
It's more testing.
Well, I do four.
So.
So.
And then.
Dan, right now.
Yeah.
Your current spot.
That's not weird.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably never happens.
Well, let's.
Okay.
No, it's like this.
How much time?
Funding.
What's going to happen?
The game is just my contact.
Has been.
Right.
Eight way project.
How many years have they said, oh, I wish we had more.
I bet.
I don't know.
I don't have a lot of money.
I think you just can't.
How should I?
Yeah.
Do we know if our, what about our colleagues?
Diana said she's going to be on Zoom. I haven't heard anything from Mara.
Oh.
But we are live.
Oh, okay. We're five oh one. I guess we're just waiting for that to see how many. If some more folks show up, we do have a quorum. So we're expecting that it to dial in. Let's get for a minute to do that. Everything's been up Trihydro?
Yeah.
Arizona bike by there, I think of you.
Yeah. Convenient to be right on the bike path like that. I should be getting out.
You're just.
Oh, there.
Furiously trying to keep caught up.
Why? It just works pretty often there very much time. I see plenty of people walking out there. I think from Trihydro.
Twenty and twenty is there. I think they, they have an active group of employees over there.
It's been beautiful down along the river.
Yeah.
Before we started today.
Well, there's still some changes. It won't be up much longer. Well, all right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. We're expecting one more commissioner to show up at least two. So let's start with a quick roll call of who's here now. Sanning.
Here.
Platt. Here. Kornick is currently absent. Mr. David is absent and Inkley here. So we do have a quorum. The agenda is quite short. Just by way of a preface to that. Note that we are not presenting the entirety of our response to the newly passed cap here. We're just addressing updates to the western boundary. So as you know. Casper Protection Plan has been developed over the last year plus, which had a whole host of recommendations for how to change the, the implementing zoning resolution. And, and rather than doing that all in a great big package, we have chose to pick out some of the key pieces of it and bring those through to resolution. Rather than try and do the whole thing at once. So I hope that piecemeal approach has been helpful to those who are looking at implementation of that rather than confusing. And then by no means are we done with this. We will move on into some of those other aspects of it like the SSIs. There were some recommendations there, some small additions to the table of prohibited uses. And then we are attention and septic system. Our intention is to take those up as we go forward. So today we're looking at the boundary. We'll also have a short discussion that isn't explicit on the agenda of a explanatory note that we put together. Again, thinking this, this western boundary is a, is a piece with, with a very significant and explicit technical base behind it. And we wanted to point that out by way of a kind of a, I said explanatory piece, something of a, of a cover memo to send on up to the board. So that'll be on the agenda, even though it's not explicit. Uh, so with that said, was there anything else you wanted to add to the agenda? We can't get too carried away because we've noticed the meeting for this. That's Sam. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I moved to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Second adult favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Okay.
Agenda moves forward. I thought it would be appropriate also to do our conventional disclosures of conflicts of interest. So maybe just a quick ground robin on that. If there's any member of the commission whose situation is specifically impacted by a change in the boundary. Now would be the time to disclose that. In my case, the answer is no. Mr. Platt. Ms. Hanning.
No, I've always been just out of the APoz and I continue to be just out of the.
Okay. So we will move into the APoz boundary and text amendment. We'll start with a staff report just to set the stage and then open a public hearing for public comments. That's the official thing we're doing here. Remember for those public comments, we'll want to have you come up to the podium, give us your name and your address and try to confine your remarks to, to three minutes or so. And not to repeat what we've already heard. We will have our next general meeting next month. And of course, we always have on the agenda an opportunity for the public comment on anything that's, that's on their mind, that they might like to bring to our attention. Following that, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to just a discussion amongst ourselves and decide how we want to do this as far as potentially passing something on to the board of cap commissioners. So with that, Mr. Gurch, what do we got?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission. So at our last meeting, September thirteenth, a motion was, was made and approved to publish the amended Casper or offer protection overlay zone map. And schedule a public hearing for October twenty sixth. The meeting was, was published per the statutory requirements. And we also provided notice on the Albany County Facebook page. Both the amended map and text amendments are available on the website and have been available since that publication. And all of the, the properties owners that are affected by the proposed changes to the western boundary of the APoz were sent a letter informing them of the change and directing them to the documents online. Inviting them to contact the planning department with questions and provided the public hearing information. That was approximately, there's almost sixty, sixty folks that were along there that are in the county that are, are impacted either with an increase or a decrease of that proposed boundary. Or of the boundary that, that exists now, the proposed boundary can go back, back and forth there. The planning department was in receipt of one comment at the time. This comment was from the city of Laramie. They requested that the property where the municipal wells exist include their entire property within the APoz. They also requested an explanation of the methodology of the amendments to the western boundary. At the time I wrote this, I didn't have any issues with the city of Laramie's request. However, I just would point out there are, by allowing something like this, it would, would not follow the methodology that we use to, to create the boundary that we're, we're proposing, what's been being proposed. And there is an option for the city as well. If, if you decided not to go with their amendments, they, they can actually go through the, the process for a site specific moving of that line if they wanted to. But anyways, I, I just wanted to note that. And then planning zoning commission, I mean, you, you basically have, have the option to approve the map amendments and the text amendments as they're published. You can approve the map with additional amendments such as accepting the city of Laramie's recommendations and the text amendments. That may be a substantive change, which would probably require rep publication. And you cannot approve either the text or the, the map. And you can make another motion for whatever you guys, you guys want to do, I guess. So. But yeah, that, that's basically it. You know, I'm just kind of outlining what, what we've kind of done. Obviously, there's a lot of work that went into this. The, the boundary, as you're well aware, was, was determined using the maps that were provided in the Casper Protection Plan that was updated. The, the use of, of the, the protective satanic shell thickness line, which was determined by the seventy five foot kind of criteria, as well as some other criteria that were used where there may be a need to protect city wells in the south. But there were some other criteria, but it was mostly that seventy five feet and they used the state, the state well logs for that. And then there was another line that goes, that would go out to the property lines. That was another map. And then there was another map that, that kind of showed that information, but they showed the areas where they're lacking well data. And so what this commission did was they took the protectors to take a show line and the, the map that was, was also proposed that goes out to the, the boundary lines and, and that other map and, and followed that. That line that hugged in a little bit closer to the east. And, and then where there was missing wells, well logs, we went out to the property line because there, there wasn't enough information. And I think that kind of caps off what we're looking at. I mean, anybody can correct me or add to that, but, but that's kind of where we're at. That's what we did. And then we changed the, the text amendments or specifically to how we adjust that boundary in the future. If, if someone on their property wants to, to adjust that. So, yeah. Is there any questions for me at this time? That's kind of the, the rough rundown of things.
That sounds good. I would just say that let's, including the packet to the county commission, the note that was sent, I think that was an important thing that we did. It wasn't necessarily required to all landlords.
Oh.
I think it would be useful to have the minutes include that as, as kind of record of what we've done here.
Okay.
With that, actually, what did you, what it said?
To do that.
Otherwise, so I think you've, you've hit it all, all right. And then again, just for the record, to be clear, because this has gone on and kind of bounced back and forth. These are amendments to the zoning resolution that was passed in February of this year. Like, is that correct? What is it that we're amending precisely?
Um, yeah, that was the last time this was amended. It's in February.
Because there was some amendments. What? November twenty one, but then.
Yeah.
Were found to be procedurally there, so a bit back. So just to get everybody on the same page, in, in essence, we're amending back several generations, but technically what we're, what we're amending is the zoning resolution hasn't existed since. Correct. Okay. Thank you. Other, other thoughts, comments before we get into.
I just also like to make a statement too.
Please.
It just is the, for the record, state that, of course, as we use whatever map or diagram or picture, whatever we have for the APoz. In event of indispute of where the protective shale line actually is, we do have a shape file which defines that, that location.
Yep. And, and those who attended our, our last meeting, and there was a, a long discussion of that. And, and we may come back to it with some small corrections to the text in terms of surveyed lines and, and GIS shape files and, and appropriate use of GPS. So we may get to that when we come back to the discussion. If there's nothing else.
I've got a question for, well, actually for either matter day.
Okay. And then we will have a discussion after we're done.
Okay.
Comments, wherever it's appropriate.
Well, I think it's. I'm just like to know for sure that if we should adopt the city's recommendation here to include all of their property, that constitute a substantial, a significant change or not?
Let, let's hold that thought and treat them as a comment.
Right.
And then I was thinking we could just kind of go through.
That's okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right. So let's move on to, thank you, Mr. Gurch, to our public comments. You indicated we've gotten one from the city. We also got one more by email just recently. Is that right?
Yeah. Did that come in today?
Mr. Sutherland.
Yeah, so that, yes, came in today that I passed on to you.
And we will, we will take that up at the.
Okay.
When we get back to discussing comments. So we are open to public comment on the draft that was proposed.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Cinderarm with the Albany County Clean Water Advocates. I just want to thank you again for all the work, valuable time and effort you've put into this, on this update. And now the work of implementing is just beginning. And we wish to publicly state our appreciation for all the hard work and stuff you've done. And attention to the, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would certainly echo the effort that's gone into this. A, a large part of it is funded by the taxpayers of Albany County by, by virtue of hiring a consultant. They did the heavy lifting on this boundary issue for us. Others? Somebody in the back, you're, you're shifting around there like you want to come forward, go for it. All right, Mr. Delly, we'll start with you.
My name is, excuse me. Marion Erdelli, and I'm at twenty four thirty six Nadler. And I too, sorry to be redundant here, but I do want to thank you for all of your work. I think it's fantastic that you have people that actually care about protecting our water and making it happen is invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you, and you're certainly welcome. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is April Brimmer. I am the only partner in Nipper LLC and I received the notice. My property is at thirty twenty five Pope Springs Road. And I heard you mention shale. I live in Cheyenne, so this is all new to me. But I, I also would say, congratulations, water is our most precious resource, no question about it. I did hear you mention shale. Is there shale out close to this boundary? We have a lot of, of rock at the ranch. And so I don't know how that plays in. But I guess what my real question is, is how this would impact the ranch. We are bordered partially by the city property that's out there and Vista. Vista is our eastern boundary. And the best I can make out from this, we're probably not included in the boundary at this time. But if we were, what would the impact be on the ranch?
Okay. I mean, we're both, we're taking comments on what's in front of you now, just, just very, very quickly, the, the shale that lays on top of the Casper Rockford is considered the protective layer. So that's questions whether it's sufficiently thick at a particular location to, to do its job. And that's the basis for how that line was drawn. I don't know the location of your property. If you're west of Vista, you're probably outside the APoz. But then again.
Okay.
That you could certainly work out those details with, with Mr. Gurch. It's a matter of just bringing up the map on the, on the GIS. And I'll throw in a, a plug for the, the county's GIS. That's available to you online. And, and it's, it gets better each year. You could bring up the math that will show you exactly where your property is, where the zoning lines are, so forth.
Okay.
You can decide just exactly.
So it's, it's probably right next to, I, I had a hard time with the map that was here, figuring that out that was sent, you know, that I downloaded from on the computer.
Yeah, you're going to need to dig into the GIS to really get.
Could you tell me arguendo in a very short period of time, since I'm committed to the three minutes? If I was included in this, would it impact my ranch operations or would it be grandfathered in?
Again, any, any specific things like that, you'd have to sit down with the staff. There, there is a table of prohibited uses that basically sets up things that can't happen on the aquifer. And, and if you were contemplating one of those uses and you were within the zone, then you would be prohibited from doing that.
Where would I find those prohibited?
That's all in the tables that are listed in the.
Oh, I can't imagine that I'm doing anything that is prohibited, but I'd like to know because if I am, I wouldn't do it.
You don't have a concentrated animal feeding operation out there probably.
No.
So that's probably the only.
That's, that would be the biggest.
You mean that, you mean that.
Feedlot.
Like a feedlot. A feedlot, no. We don't have a feedlot. Okay.
So it, it maybe there was some confusion there. What was posted, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gurch, was the piece of the zoning resolution that bear, on bore on the western boundary.
Correct.
Behind that is the larger zoning resolution. And that will, would give you all of the details about, there's a table of prohibited uses. There's a procedure for doing site specific investigations to assess one's impact on the aquifer. So you'd really need to look at that, the whole zoning resolution.
Thank you.
To answer your question.
Thank you very much for the information. This has been very helpful. I would not want to do anything that was prohibited by, in any way. So thank you for helping me.
We hope you will find that our regulations are, are helpful for the citizens of Albany County without unduly constraining your operations.
Thank you.
You bet. Others, somebody in the back there looked like they wanted to come forward. Please do.
Hi, I'm Chris Mazzari and I live at thirty nine twenty one Satankin. Which is right on that western boundary that you guys are talking about. My property line at one point on that west property and my property was in the protection zone. Now it is out. I want to know the process when it was moved. At one point it was out and it was in and it's out. That process, I don't know where it came. Now I'm out of it. Well, I got probably fifty feet. It's hard to tell off the maps on how much my property is in this Casper protective boundary.
Okay.
So I'd like that cleared up because there's Ramble A that's right there. If it was me drawing the map, I'd pick that street Ramble A as a boundary. Just saying.
Okay. Yeah. Again, we don't use this.
You're right. I'm just, because of the comments, I, my comment is, it seems like it's moving all over the place.
Yeah.
You need to pick a spot where it's at. Because I was grand, not grandfathered, when I did my house two years ago. I had all my permits and did all my stuff, my septic. And if we get back into this Casper Rockford, same question the lady right before me said, my grandfathered in with my septic and my well.
Yeah. And I, my first reaction would be say, yes. I hate to say that as a blanket without knowing exactly what you have and where it is. You could certainly sit down, Mr. Gurch, and go through that. With respect to the boundary, the, the county adopted a offer protection overlay zone boundary back in two thousand two. And that has, that may be what you're thinking of as the old.
Was out of it, then, then here in November I was in it.
Well, though that, then there's been various suggestions going back and forth. But on paper that there was that boundary. I guess I'm, I, there was a short period of time when the boundary was moved and that was found to be, to have been implemented in a procedurally flawed way. So that one went away. Fair enough. And now we're back to the boundary that's before you today, which is, it, it does not follow any of those streets. That was an explicit decision on the part of this board because we felt that we wanted to honor the, the hydrogeologic criteria, which says we need this much satanic shale on top of the Casper Rockford.
So they conserve, but they can survey that chunk.
That, that, you can read about that in appendix D to the Casper Rockford Protection Plan. And there you'll see posted all of the individual well logs that were used to try to make that hydrogeologic determination. But there was discussion of running it down streets and property lines just to make it convenient. And we felt that that might be unduly burdensome on folks who had a piece of property that only were a small part of, actually meant hydrogeologic criteria. So we opted to go with hydrologic criteria to spare the, the regulation of lands that really didn't qualify to be in the protection zone. And that's why you're seeing that line. You're swerving around a little bit.
And then, then, you know, this, the first, there's a second meeting I've been to and kind of listened and gone over. It'd be real helpful for me or I don't know who else is here to show a map up there so we can kind of show what we're looking at. I don't know, one of the TVs or whatever. And I don't know if that's helpful. It's, it's helpful for me.
Yeah. And we've, we've had a fair amount of that in our past meetings. And again, you can.
Well, I know I can go online and look at it, but to sit here and talk about it, to see where everybody's talking about.
Well, all right, let.
You see what I'm saying?
How many more people are going to want to comment here? I, because I'm really like.
Okay, I, I went over my three minutes.
Oh, you're, you're, you're good. If we could take this as an opportunity to, to clear up some issues, then let's, let's do it.
We're, we're, yep. That's mine.
So you're pretty much out.
Well, this, the one at the county building showed it here. See the highway, the road right here, I own right, right there. All three of these properties, at one point you had this property, this line went this way at one point.
So are you, are you clear on what it is now?
Well, when I went down the back, when you said to go on this letter to go down on Third Street, that map down there is trying to, all over the place. It's not like this map that I'm looking at here.
Okay, I can't.
Appreciate it. This is the map now that.
This is the map.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. But if Mr. Gurch is telling you, this isn't the map, this is what we're talking about.
That's my piece problem.
Yep.
Yeah. And at one point you guys had it here.
Oh, yeah. Because we did, we did move it over.
Over to that property line.
Yes. But this is, this is what's been approved for, for this hearing today. So they have moved it, yes.
Okay. Then we'll get another notice if you move it again.
Yeah, we can, yeah. We'll see that.
Another notice. So based on what you just learned from Mr. Gurch, do you have any objections to what we're doing going forward?
No, just.
Okay.
To be clear is where it's going and what it's doing and what lady who was just talked here a little bit ago. What can we, or what can we do? I mean, I'm right on that boundary.
Yeah. So the line, it should be completely clear where the line is. And then as far as what can and can't do, depending on which side of the line you're in, read the, read the document.
Right.
And you'll get the list. There's like thirty eight prohibited uses, most of which.
Well.
Nobody does around here.
People live around me, neighbors which live right to the south of me have cattle.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And then you have place to the east of us that are cat.
And it's, it's a matter of whether they're confined or not. Okay, so let's get, get her back to the, to the subject at hand, which is a, make a specific proposal, both in text and map. Are there further comments on that proposal? Seeing none, I'll turn to the online, uh. Change the screens. Is there anybody online? Oh, okay. Commissioner Hanning has just pointed out to us, me, the Commissioner, Kocornik is now online.
She's the only one. There's no public comment.
Okay. All right, then I, last call for public comments, seeing, hearing none. I'm open to a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? It's been moved to second to close the public hearing on this proposal. I'll, if you ever say hi.
Hi.
Ms. Kocornik?
Aye.
Okay, same sign. Anybody opposing, same sign, rather. Okay, done. Thank you very much for those who took the time to read through the document and bring their opinions forward. So, uh, by way of discussion, um, I had a number of just small things that I brought up. But maybe let's start with public comments. We had a, a note earlier today from Mr. Sutherland. Is he here today? Okay, I, I don't see him. It seemed to me the most useful response to Sutherland was to direct him to appendix D of the cap. And so if you could do that, uh, I think it would answer his question, which was, how was the line developed? And I, I think the data. Good detail by, by Stantech there. So if, if you give him that response, Mr. Gerch, that would be, I like it. Does anybody else want to comment on that? Okay, then we have the comment from the city. Well, reaction to that before I offer mine. And I think you had something earlier you were going to bring forward.
Well, I had a brief discussion with David, uh, yesterday about that. He pointed out that, uh, went out correctly, that since the city owns this property. I mean, effectively they can say whatever goes on the property anyway. If it's going to hold us up from approving this tonight, I would suggest we do that later.
Well, then let's direct your question to Mr. Ers. Would doing what they requested of us constitute a substantive change to the point of getting us back through?
I think that, um, it's certainly, you know, and part of what was noticed, um, for the purposes of this meeting was that there would be an amendment to the western boundary of APOZ. So if you're looking at it in the, you know, under the standard of, of was this within the context of the notice that was provided, I would say yes. Um, so no, it would be a substantive amendment in that sense. But it also, it, Wyoming has now developed a specific rule on exactly what a substantive amendment is. So I'm kind of hybridizing a few different other states that have. Um, there are some states where it may be a substantive amendment, um, just because it wasn't part of what was coming before. But ultimately, it would only be affecting the city, um, and not, not any private entities. Uh, so the city would be the ones that can pla, or would, that would have the ability to complain of it. Um, so I guess the substantive or non-substantive, maybe in this situation, is the most important consideration.
In that case, I can't imagine anyone's going to object to this, frankly.
Uh, Will? We'll expand your imagination here in a moment.
I, I could be wrong.
Okay. Did you have any comments on the city's request?
Well, I, I guess I think it would be, if it's not clearly a substantive change, I'd be in favor of granting their petition. And I think if you generously look at the Administrative Procedure Act. You could say that they were an interested person that petitioned us for an amendment. And that we're in a position to entertain it, even though we haven't developed a set format. But Mr. Ers thinks I'm being too gracious with that interpretation.
Yeah, I certainly would not consider that as a petition to amend, uh, rules and regulations.
Public comment.
It's a public comment on a.
Petition.
On a proposal that's already an amendment. So I don't know if you could petition an amendment of an amendment.
I mean, I, I would take it as a public comment, um, with the caveat that the city is, is a very special member of the public. And the whole Casper Rockford Protection Plan, in fairness, is generated by interested protect, well, as a city, so yeah. They're a very substantial commenter. My objection to it, to address your point, Commissioner Platt. And it, certainly we have a long cooperative relationship with the city, of which we are very protected and should be. And the whole cap was developed as a joint instrument, as it should have been. And so I, I don't. We'd very likely compromise that in any way. I do think that the, for a number of reasons, that, that, that we should decline their request. One would be the, the point that Mr. Gerch alluded to. And I had hoped that we could get our representative in the city here tonight to explain why they want to do that. Their letter offers nothing. This is, shock me, is sort of the, keep us from doing something. I mean, what would, what would the effect of it be is us who would be telling the city, you can't do the papal privileges on your own property. If they want to be more protective of their property, they can simply not do that or put it into a conservation easement or put deed restrictions on if they were sell a piece of it. So that they provided us no reason to do that. Um, so why would, if someone asks us, why didn't you do that? I think the only reason we have for us would be to be accommodating of our, our neighbors in the city. And it's inconsistent with the philosophy that we've brought forward as we've kicked this line around in terms of we would like it to be as, as reflective of the hydrogeologic protection criteria as possible. And ironically, the, the, the specific spots along the western boundary where we are most confident of the stratigraphy are the city properties. For the very reason that they have city wells there that have been very carefully logged by qualified geologists. Uh, and the, the evidence that's been brought forward by those wells, it was accommodated by Stantech when they put the line together. So I, corruption's too large a word, but I would hate to see our, our criteria for drawing a line compromised, maybe is a better word, by these jogs off to the west. For no specified reason that's been provided to us. Now let me bring Mr. Gerch into the conversation. Have you had a chance to speak with, with the, the city representative, Mr. T D, about this? What's, what's your sense? Why, why do they want us to do this? And how strongly do they feel about it?
So, yeah, so Mr. Chair, I'm sure some. My sense is that it's not a huge issue to them. I mean, when I questioned, um, Mr. Tini about the reasoning for the moving of the line is they. The basis of his answer was that they wanted the line defined so they understand better where it is by property line. And they felt like having it by property line, they would better understand where the line is. That was, that was kind of the answer that I got. Nothing more, nothing less, really. Um, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion on that. So, but that was kind of his, his take on it. So, but at the same time, um, and, and they were invited to this meeting. They had some other, some other meetings tonight that they had to be at, so they weren't able to be here. And so, um, so that invitation was made. But my sense was that it wasn't like a huge deal, but they were, they wanted to make their thoughts known to us before we go ahead with anything. So.
Okay.
But, yeah, I can't really speak for them to say for sure, you know, but like that was my sense. So, you know.
Okay, no, that's what we asked before, was just what, what the feedback had been. And, and I think we'd understood from this various conversations we've had in the past that, that the city was supportive of the property line-based boundary. And in fact, when the, when the city approved the two thousand eight cap, it had a property line boundary. Uh, it was somewhat meaningless in that they had no jurisdiction in the county, but they had previously declared their interest in that. Additional level of caution that going to those western property lines might provide them. My sense of that would be that we have now looked at that issue more carefully, thanks to our consultant and, and the errors that were identified in two thousand eight, which the movement of the boundary was intended to, to address, have been, have now been addressed in a explicit way and the shale protective line was drawn accordingly. So that's where I am on the, the city reluctantly. I would like to say decline rather than reject their suggestion. Ms. Kocornik, do you have anything to offer on this particular point?
Probably nothing new. I do think we've gone to a lot of trouble to not be arbitrary with this line. And we should consistently stick to our criteria. So especially if it does, they can still do what they want with their property, right? They can restrict themselves. So I would, I would be in favor of just sticking with our criteria and not moving the line.
Mr. Ers? And Mr. Chair, may I briefly interject?
Please.
Um, another, uh, one, I mean, my initial thought on seeing this request was that, you know, Stantech. I mean, they spent great time and effort in developing this protective, um, Sankey Shale Thickness line. And it's still bisected, uh, the city's properties. Um, and further my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, as you understand better, is that, you know, that data from their properties and their wellheads is where we're getting some of the best idea of exactly where that protective thickness is. So. Um, I think that, you know. Even more so goes against, um, just the, the conceptual reasoning for the development of this line.
That's, I think that you've, you've stated that correctly with respect to the geology and the quality of the data. Right, further discussion of their comment, um, if someone would like to bring a motion forward, we can. Or if we don't want to bring a motion forward, we can move on.
Oh, we're going to move on to the text.
And we can, I, I guess I'm thinking that would be a specific amendment that could be offered at this point. So if someone want, if, if, if one of, of fellow commissioners would like to put a vote to whether we move the boundary to accommodate the city's request or not, now I think it'd be an appropriate time to make that motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll move that we, uh, take a vote on this.
So you're, you're moving to accept to, to move the boundary?
Uh, no.
What are you?
Then we'd make a vote on whether or not to move.
Okay, well, we need a, we need a motion to.
I guess my motion's not very good. Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we, we stick with what we have and reject this request from the city.
Okay, and we, and we don't need a motion to not do anything. Is, is that, that's what I'll be correcting. We, we can take an explicit vote on that, but certainly not this.
Yeah. I think it needs to be a positive motion.
That's, that's my sense.
Direct staff to write a letter back to the city saying, I mean, when I'm going to adjust the boundary and if they really want to pursue it. Oh, we'll make a petition to.
Okay, no, that would be completely appropriate. All right. So I guess if unless you want to add something to it, I'm not hearing any affirmative, uh, amendment to our proposal at this point.
Yeah, no, I, I think that you're correct that it doesn't require a motion to dispose of that since it wasn't an agenda item. It was just a consideration.
Okay, would you like to recraft your motion?
That's what we all need to do.
To bring it to a vote, or are you happy with what you heard?
I think we can just proceed that.
Okay, um, and Ms. Hanning, you had some comments on that that I think were appropriate.
Um, I'm, I move that we direct staff to respond back to the city explaining why we are not adjusting the boundary and providing them the opportunity to make a formal petition under the Administrative Procedures Act, if they really want to move the boundary.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion. We have a second for that, uh, discussion, that motion, um. Yeah, uh, I would just point out that, that we explicitly put in the regulation. Anybody can come to us at any time to ask for that, but it would be a, a good courtesy to the city to proceed. Other thoughts on the motion that Ms. Hanning's brought forward? Let's, I, I think that can be disposed of with a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Ms. Kocornik?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. And so the staff understand that instruction?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, then I'm ready to turn to the actual text. Some of, of my thoughts that I with that are small, but I think let's provide our board as clean a coffee as we can. So I'm open to suggestions, large or small, if anybody has the text as it was distributed.
May I ask just a general question?
Please.
We have discussed this possibility of moving or adjusting the boundary line. I think almost completely in the past in terms of someone wanting to take their property out of APOZ. In this case, we have had someone come to us saying they might like to add their property APOZ. So I don't believe our, our post-tax addresses that.
I, I thought.
It's general. I thought we wrote it generic. If you want to change it, here's how you change it.
So even if you want to extend the APOZ on your property, it would still require SSI and all the other criteria.
That's, I would read this.
That's fine, that's my question.
And, and, and we did have a discussion and actually changed the language. Uh, I was certainly most fond of moving the line should require certain criteria, whether you're moving it. Very good, or southeast or west. Is that consistent with you guys' interpretation of what we've got in front of us?
Yes, okay, thank you. And it, it wouldn't explicitly require an SSI, um, in the same sense that other development would. Uh, it just requires a, a geologist stamped sort of report.
Well, all right, now let's, let's talk about that a second. I guess when, the way we wrote this is any site-specific. Any, any movement of the boundary on a specific site would require, they'd have to go through this process, no?
Yes.
It's a specifics process, but it's, it's not the same as the site-specific process later on, or.
Right, but, but one, if one wanted to move the boundary west. Wouldn't they have to go through this and provide us the evidence for why we should do that?
Yeah, which would be the report stamped by Wyoming Licensed Professional Geologist or Engineer Providing Geologic and Hydrogeologic Data on the location of at least seventy-five feet of undisturbed Sankey Shale thickness under the property or portion of the property.
Yeah, okay, I'm with you. And then, but then that would get a peer review and.
Yes, but then the actual SSI as far as this development.
Yeah, okay, I misunderstood your distinction of.
Sorry, yeah, it's the nomenclature.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, other, other thoughts on this or corrections? Ms. Kocornik, I had, like, I had a few that I'd like to just go through with you. I don't think they're too controversial. Okay, hearing that, um, reading the preface, it's. It, it struck me, we could clean up our language a little bit when I read the APOZ boundaries and zone one, two, the APOZ. Let's see. The protective areas for municipal wellfield as shown on the official zoning maps. I didn't see zones one and two on the map. So I'm just thinking that isn't precisely correct. I don't, I don't think your maps do shows on.
They do.
They do.
It's that blue dot.
They're included on there, yes. So, okay, I didn't see the blue dots, but maybe it was my seeing that was a little error. Okay, then I go forward and it says, da, 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 delineation of the APOZ. APOZ is based upon the delineation of the Casper Rockford Protection Area, Kappa, in the cap. So we've got APOZ's caps and Kappas that I got a little confused on. I thought it might be cleaner to just say delineation of the APOZ is based upon the Casper Rockford Protection Plan adopted by the county commissioners such and such date. Rather than this more involved statement about the, the cap and the kappa. So, and, and, and does it somehow get us in a bind when we say it's based upon the delineation of the kappa? When we then modify that somewhat? Again, I thought it might be cleaner if we just said. Again, I thought it might be cleaner if we just said delineation of the APOZ is based upon the cap. Adopted by the Florida County Commissioner. So. If you want to bring up the text, maybe that would be helpful and.
Yeah, maybe I can figure out where.
For what I'm talking about. Yes, this is the very first paragraph.
Yeah, that's I D.
Okay.
See if I can make this do what I want to do.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize. I just dived right in here, but we all be seeing what we're, we're seeing the same thing. Okay, so what I'm suggesting is that, that I guess it's the last sentence of the, of. First paragraph, our delineation of the APOZ.
Oh. There, that's not the same one.
That's what I'm looking at. I don't think.
That's the old one, that are those before.
Okay. But no version controls been. A problem with this, as it always is. Are you looking through it one now?
Yeah.
Okay, so. The, the sentence I'm looking, I'm working on is the one that starts out the APOZ boundary. No, it's the one that starts out delineation of the APOZ is based upon. With me? I would say is based upon. And then strike everything down to the word, to the cap. So it simply says is based upon the cap. C A P P cap.
Needs to be the old language, so.
So I'm, so I'm.
Was there a reason why it was important to add the delineation of the CAPA?
Yes, I mean, ma'am.
Yeah, and, and then just to, another thing I had in mind is that when we get to number one, then we can more cleanly say northern, southern, eastern are as. Identified in the CAPA, the CAPA is wrong for protection area because we are simply using those lines presented to us. In the case of the other lines, we're not using the CAPA. So that's why I got confused. So yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Well, that makes me feel better with that second suggestion on one.
Okay.
Throw off one and two. But, um, no, I mean, the thought, so there's the cap.
Okay, that's the big document.
That's the big document. There's a lot of stuff in there, which is a delineation.
Right.
Um, so I, I wanted to be in formulating as, as, you know, based upon your request as specific as possible to what it, what is really the delineation and. The delineation of the cap. Which is a subset of the cap. So that is why. That is why I wanted to be as specific as possible on what really is the basis. And there's a lot in the cap that doesn't form a basis for this because, you know, it's got the. Well, the contaminant management stuff.
But, but does it trouble you at all that then we aren't, we aren't, I mean, this business of what the Stantec said is. The CAPA should have this Western boundary and we're saying, no, thanks. We're going to do it differently. That's where it just got a little bit confusing in my mind. So we are using the. Cap. Designated CAPA, north, southern.
So, yeah.
East, but we're using. Other parts of the cap for the west.
That's why it's, it's based upon and not, you know, adopts and incorporates. Based upon being, you know, to use an idea effect situation as a point from which something can be developed. It was a somewhat good definition I just found. So I mean, that is the basis is the CAPA. And the CAPA showed, well, it showed, I mean, it showed everything. It showed, you know, the old line. Or maybe it didn't show the old line, but it showed the protective stank of thickness share line. They suggest our recommended administrative boundary line. So. This, I mean, sir, just, you know, using both, it, it is the CAPA.
Okay, so the based upon, if it doesn't cause you any trouble to then somebody would come back and say, no, you didn't. You would be, you would cite them the definition. You just cited us. We proceed.
Yeah.
All right, I guess if you're happy that I will withdraw my attempt to, to clarify. Right, the next thing I had was on number two, I would put protective shale thickness line in quotes. That is a specific thing. When we refer to it and they refer to it by that way, would that be clearer?
Do they put it in quotes?
They don't put it in quotes, but as we were referring to it. Would it be helpful to, to say that's, that, that is the thing? Or, or does that?
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay. All right, well, I'm, some of this I'm, I'm trying to be clear for someone who might be wanting to contend with us later on. So. I'll accept your direction on that. It struck me that it's being a very specific thing. It almost becomes. Kind of make it into a proper noun, but I get quotes.
Well, I would certainly, actually I haven't known, you know, I think that when we revisit the rest of it, we should define exactly what seventy-five foot. Protective stank of thickness share line. You know, is in the definition section. So.
Okay.
I think. But it's also, I mean, you, this directs you to the cap and the CAPA. So. You know, that hasn't explained in there exactly what that is.
Okay, this is, the point is this isn't a term that we made up from the resolution. It's a term we drew from the cap, but, but if we pick it up later as a definition, that would satisfy my concern that it be a. Coherent defined thing.
Yeah, I don't think, I think that it would be a stretch for someone to say they don't, they don't know what, you know, what is this and where is it from?
Okay. Then I'm, I'll, I'll move along.
Well, I have a one question about.
Please go ahead.
What, what formally should we be calling this line? What is the technically correct name for this? Because I've certainly used lots of different names.
Yeah, right.
The shale line, safe foot line, effective line.
The line that we are now adopting is the Western boundary of the APOZ.
Yes.
Yeah.
That I understand, but the seventy-five foot line.
It is called the protective stank shale line.
In that case, maybe we should have a capitalized P after CAPA like that.
Okay, no, I don't follow that thought.
In two. Where, where it goes, the Western boundary of the APOZ is the location of CAPA's protective stank show line. Maybe P should be capitalized. State statute and state regulations, like they don't have that level of capitalization, even when they have like defined very specific terms.
So your comment's basically same as mine. I would.
I mean, it's, it's not a huge deal for me obviously, but anyway.
All right.
I would recommend that we revisit that with like the definitions section, and then we can get it all in one fell swoop and we can see it, you know.
No, I, I, I'm happy with that. I just want it to nail, be nailed down someplace.
And I should be speaking for you more. Where Diana?
Small batter, the bottom of number two, I think line, lines, this should be line. Section line.
Those are only one section. Let's do, how many sections are there?
Nearest property township or section lines.
Well, because, yeah, because it's, it's, there's multiple of those. I mean, it's not all just the section line. Isn't there also property line in those?
I was just parsing the sentence. The Western boundary is the nearest property township or section.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
All right.
But that word lines goes for property lines, township lines or section lines.
Okay. Others don't read the grammar quite like I did. That's fine. All right, that one more, which is. Well, one more, this is just small and then, and then one that is kind of substitute. Let's go to the end. Under. Romanet. Must be. B. Where it's talking about site specific boundary amendments conforms to the locations. This is another just clarification thing that struck me. The phrase is. Boundary amendment conforms to the location of at least seventy-five feet. It's in the findings that we have to make.
Oh.
Undisturbed stank of thickness under the portion, under the property or. I would say the relevant portion of the property. Instead of just a portion of the property.
Where are you at? So. So I've got down to six.
Is it three, one, I?
Okay, keep going down. There we go. Yeah.
As I read it, it says you have to tell me about under the property or a portion of property. I would just like to focus their attention on the, that, that particular portion of the property. It isn't just any portion of the property. It's the one that they're trying to get excluded.
Serious time.
So I would just add the word or relevant portion of the property.
And take out a.
And take out a.
Okay.
Except that is just editorial. Anybody got a problem with that?
I can't find it.
So, Mr. Chairman, that would also then affect. Let's see, it would be so five B one. Uh, higher up as well. It has that same language. Uh, just be one or sorry, yeah, be one I, you're correct, Joe. My apologies. Um, yeah, be one I or Romanet I. That it also has that same language. So that would need to be changed.
Yeah, yeah, I see. Just change A to. Okay, then that brings me to my, my substantive. Comment that I'd like to bring to the. Commission's attention in that Romanet. Two, do I? Right after what we're just talking about. We had a long discussion about surveyed lines and so forth, and I thought our agreement was that if someone brought a line forward to us in a, in a. Format compatible with, with how we're. Preserving line, it would not be necessary to have a surveyed line. So my suggestion was that we strike the words stamped and signed by a licensed surveyor and. So the requirement would read site plan as defined by the application form depicting the proposed Western APOZ boundary. And it seemed to me that that would be consistent with our earlier long discussion about do we want to see surveyed lines or are we willing to accept? GIS lines.
I think that's, that's a consistent.
So what we would, what we typically do, like for other zoning changes. If they are not going to you do the entire property, we would require as, as a, a survey line that was stamped so that we know where it is to put it into our. Our database.
Like for a bag zone versus a residential zone?
Yes.
Okay.
Still work on this. Not necessarily out in the field.
Well, so there's the question, is this, maybe it's ambiguous in the language. Does this mean a surveyed? Line. I mean, it seems inconsistent to me that we have, we have now defined the line that we're making the Western boundary of the APOZ through a GIS process. And we are not requiring.
Well, that's how it was developed.
We haven't provided to anybody as a surveyed line. So now we're upping the game to make them come to us with a surveyed line.
Well, this is as a site plan. It doesn't discuss a survey line.
Okay.
A site plan can be prepared indoors, you know, just on, you know, an auto cat or something.
So you wouldn't interpret that to mean the line? I think Mr. Gerchwood.
Or it's the lot being in the line.
Predicting the Western boundary line.
I would say that under like its plain language, it just, the site plan, which includes that boundary line. Has to be stamped and signed by a surveyor. Doesn't necessarily, or it does not say that, that there has to be a survey line.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to.
Okay, that's how you would apply it, Mr. Gerch.
I mean, basically what we would want is a survey that shows where, where it's crossing a property, right? So. I mean, if they have two points that crosses a property, that's, that's what we need. So we can draw, we want to be able to draw it into our map. The way they're proposing accurately.
But that would be on the site plan.
Correct, yeah.
So however they develop that. You know, if they stamp it and it's, it's up to them.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about a site plan like if they came forward with a subdivision.
Any kind of site plan.
But, well, all right, I guess again, I keep going back to the script. If, if I came in with my. Shape file showing you this is where I want to put the, the Western boundary and here's all my well logs that support that. And here's a map of what that would look like with that meet this criteria.
If it's stamped and signed by a surveyor.
Okay.
Says.
Okay. So then the surveyor would, he would, he would say, now I didn't survey this line, but.
In a geo reference environment. Um, you know, the property can be positioned exactly.
Sure.
And the line across that property exactly as well.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, a lot of times I don't think.
That would not require a survey of all the property. He could have, he wanted to, or she could have, she wanted to, but.
I guess I don't necessarily know if they would go out. To the property and do the survey and on the property, they may just do it in the. Digital environment like on CAD.
I mean, I think we've got to them again. If they deliver a Stanford report. Say it's good to go, then we should be able to take it.
Okay, just as long as we're clear that that wavy line is a difficult thing to survey and meets and bounds survey land.
Actually, I don't think it's difficult to have a survey at all.
Well, just to, to describe the results of the survey that as you would a property line. You're not going to sell a piece of property without a meets and bounds kind of a survey.
What I would suspect would happen is if someone came in, they would keep the line pretty straight because I think that would be easier to do. Yeah, and as long as they meet that criteria and they're, they're past seventy-five feet. I mean, ultimately, like we get a surveyor involved, they're going to bring us in a survey. That's just what's going to happen. It's going to be stamped and signed because they have to do it according to their professional licenses. That's just anytime we've ever asked for somebody. It, you know, if we say, hey, we need to do this site plan, the site plan is going to be a survey. That's what we're going to receive.
When you think of all these site plans we've seen in numerous applications in the past, we don't know if the survey has been out in the field or not. We don't care. Like, we're looking at a site plan and. You're saying it's good to go.
Right.
Okay, I mean, those are different in the sense that they're going to sell the lot that we see in the, in the subdivisions.
Yes.
Have to have a survey to do that.
Yeah, may I just interject that, you know, again, it, the standard, the legal standard for zoning boundaries is not that it's surveyed. It's just that it's static and can be applied consistently on a case by case basis. So. Whatever gets us to there, but it's not that this has to be unflappable.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, if it's a case that this is being done preparatory to a sale. At that point, yeah, a survey would go out there and, you know, monument the line because that's what you do when you're subdividing a property.
If it were redone preparatory to a sale, but that isn't necessarily what's going to happen here. But I, I think what Mr. Ers just said is the guidance that we took from this long discussion we had last time. And so I guess again, I'm coming back. If I came into you, Mr. Gerch, I'm not doing a site plan, I'm not a subdivision, I'm not doing anything except saying. For future reference, I want to have the option of doing derivative uses over on this half of my property. Here's the wavy line that came to me. Through my geologist's analysis, well logs, here it is. In a, in a GIS shape file. Would that meet this criteria?
No.
Okay, then I, then I have a problem.
So I guess when I think about this practically happening. Someone's going to come in because they've installed a new well. Previously there.
Right.
And they're gonna need to survey the location of that. And they're gonna have to go off of that location and come up with a, with a surveyed line, so.
With a line.
With, with a line, right, that.
Right, yes, but you have to have.
What a survey, I mean, I don't think you can avoid having a surveyor go out starting with the location of the well, right? I mean, you, you wouldn't want them to just behold the GPS and saying, I think I'm here more or less by this many feet.
That's.
That's where I get it from.
Yeah. I guess, I guess so.
The line that we are adopting was created by GPS located wells and the logs attached there too, and then interpolation by, by the folks who stand next to the line goes, and all I'm doing is saying that we shouldn't hold these guys to any higher standards than we did ourselves.
I, I re- that, um, but again, I, this doesn't mean that a surveyor has to go out there, this is asking for a site plan. And the site plan will have a bunch of lines on it. And if the survey says those lines are good stamped, then they should be good to go.
Okay, good, I was, like, because like questions I put into Mr. Gerch, you'd so that'd be acceptable. You're, you're gonna be the one who puts this form together. They're gonna have to apply on a form that's provided to them by the planning department.
Right, I mean, they need to provide a site plan that's stamped by a licensed surveyor, that's what I would accept. I guess, maybe I'm not understanding what the question is, but that's, it's what it says here, that's what I would accept.
And and would this?
And they can provide like digital data as well, I mean, that's fine, but like, I have to have what's required here, so if, if we don't want what's required here, then we need to change.
And does what's required here to you mean that the, the proposed new line has to be formally surveyed? It's the same argument discussion we had last time, and I thought we concluded that we did not need to have our western boundary surveyed in the sense of a formal hundred thousand dollars to do the whole life survey. That's, that's where I'm, which okay. So if you tell me.
What it says is that let me just read it, as defined by the application form stamped. So this is the site plan, it has to be stamped and signed by a licensed surveyor depicting the proposed western APOZ boundary where at least seventy-five feet of undisturbed satanca shale thickness is present. So it doesn't necessarily have to show where that seventy-five feet line is. It has to show where it, it could be where maybe there's eighty or ninety, but as long as it meets that criteria where over here is seventy-five feet, we know at least.
A different, different question.
Okay.
The geologist is gonna come and just tell you that I got seventy-five feet or more. And the geologist is gonna say, here's the line, weevy weevy. And I'm gonna present that to you as the applicant, saying, I want you to move your line to this, to this line because here are the data that support that. And I'm gonna give you that, my new line in the same format as your line, which is a GIS shape file. Will that be acceptable?
What I would say is it needs to be printed out on a site plan and stamped by a surveyor, and then it would be acceptable. Accompanying the digital format.
Yeah, okay, now this should be absolutely fine, okay, if that's, if that's the answer, okay, because that's, is that.
Yeah, I guess what I'm, where I'm at is like, I don't, yeah, the geologist, yeah, that's, he's, he's the guy that's gonna kind of figure that out. I just want it on, according to this, I need a, a plan that's stamped that says that's where it's at.
Okay, okay, Mr. Ers.
Yeah, I'm Mr. Chair, I, I mean, I think that that's actually why, you know, we're, of course, working on that, that changed to a description of the proposed property line shall be included with the site plan, you know, and we didn't say meets and bounds legal description, it's just, it's a description, um, in, in whatever format uh, will be convenient for the administration of, um, of the boundary by the planning office.
And and that was the sentence that we worked on, and I was concerned whether the previous sentence conflicted with that, but all right, we're all of a mind there, then, then I'll.
This doesn't say that someone has to go out there without a survey of the property, just that they can do it if they want to.
And they, and they came well, because it would be preparatory for some more elaborate plan. Okay, that's all I had. Anything else? But, uh, I'm good with this.
I'm, I'm ready.
Ms. Kornick. You still with us, Dan, or we?
You can't hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, no, I don't have any.
Right, but I'm open to a motion to certify this to the Board of County Commissioners for adoption, is the right word?
Yeah, I'd include the map as well as the text.
Okay, somebody like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval and certification of the map amendments. An included map and text amendments as published to the county board commissioners.
Thank you, sir, second.
I'll second it.
Okay, very good. Um, okay, roll call, Mr. Platt.
Hi.
Ms. Hanning.
Hi.
Kornick.
Hi.
And clearly, it's I, and it's a done deal, okay, we have an amendment. Um, next item on the agenda was this explanatory piece, um, I'm not sure, what, what would this be when you guys decide, is this just a, a resolution from us, so FYI from Burn, what, what is this critter?
Basically, an explanation of how we did what we did and so to provide with the information we're sending on.
And we would like to see this endorsed by the commission.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you have some structure.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, um, uh, that motion was a little quick, did that include, um, also an approval of the amendments as discussed and agreed upon?
Were there amendments?
Yeah, there were, um, and it was the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Changing A to relevant.
So, okay, I was, it, it didn't, I was assuming that editorial stuff was under the radar, but all right, let's go ahead and do that again.
I think it would be better that.
For precision. One more time.
Sorry.
No, that's good, that's good, let's get it.
It is good.
That's the guy that has to bat these very esoteric balls out of the field with my lawyer's attention.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, uh, and recommend certification of the map amendments and the text amendments as amended tonight to the county board of commissioners.
That we're quick.
AP or maybe APOZ boundary instead of maps?
I was just reading it.
Sounded like a coherent motion to me, are we happy with that? Is the second? Let's just start over.
All right, can we do just a, a discussion on the motion and to clarify exactly what those two, two amendments were that, that were agreed upon tonight?
We can do that, let's have a second motion before we move it forward to discussion. Is, is there a second? Do you still on board?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Ers.
Oh, uh, and thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so I suppose to, to clarify the agreed upon amendments um, to the amendments before the commission, it would be, um, to change in five B one I that instead of or a portion of the property, it's or relevant portion of the property. Uh, and then to have that same change under five B six C, or, or sorry, six, uh, I I. Is that correct?
Yes, okay, okay, and let the minutes reflect that that was the intention of motion. Given that clarification, Ms. Hanning.
I.
Platt, I, Ms. Kornick.
I.
Clearly votes I, thank you. Um, okay, so the next thing I have is the document that I was author on, uh, primarily, I had some contributions from Mr. Ers, Mr. Gerch, to try to simply explain what we did of all the things in the cap, this, the western boundary. And all the changes, like I would say, in the western boundary, this is the most important thing is how we got here. It, we haven't really moved the boundary very much, but what we have done is taken that, that nineteen ninety-nine boundary and, and put a whole lot of concrete behind it, uh, and I think to good purpose, uh, as we go forward and wanted to memorialize that, that point. That's why I started it with, let's go clear back to nineteen ninety-nine. And, and that's where the criteria were developed and they've been refined since then, applied, and we said, yes, we like it, let's go. So I guess what we're looking for would be a, a commission approval of this statement. In that spirit, or we have some discussion of this things, other things people would like to change, and if the commission doesn't like, doesn't like the idea of just endorsing this, then we can certainly make it just a comment from me. So thoughts on this statement?
Well, as I already commented, personally, I felt it's the low written, well thought out document.
Have you to endorse it, Ms. Hanning?
Yeah, I, I think we should move to approve sending it up to the commission as an explanation for how we arrived at a hybrid western boundary.
Ms. Kornick, get in to offer on this document?
I think it's helpful to explain it to everybody, so all in one place. Thank you.
Okay, let's, uh, I appreciate the, the feedback, uh, let's have a motion to send this along to the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, um, endorse this document and forward it to the Board of County Commissioners.
Sir, second.
I'll second.
All right, motion's been approved or made and seconded for their discussion. Ms. Hanning.
I.
Platt.
I.
Ms. Kornick.
I.
Clearly, I, so we're done. Uh, any other business to come forward, Lord, on this agenda, thinking not, let's adjourn. Thank you.
I'm not a talk yet.
And we may never talk about.